All right. Well, good evening and welcome everyone to the August 24th. To Walton City Council meeting. Now go ahead and call the meeting into order. Just for you folks who might be out there in Zoom land expecting us to talk about ordinance number one, four, four, two, dash, twenty tonight, we are not. That item has been postponed and will be rescheduled at a future date, so we will not be taken into consideration tonight ordinance number one, four, four, two, dash, twenty. So with that, I'll go on to public comment. And public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in Zoom land or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time.
Hi Mayor, we do have someone at the poll center who'd like to speak.
All right.
Hi, my name is Carla Weeding and I live at nine, one, five, zero, southwest Dono. So I, the backyard then would face the new development, but I have a question about the property itself. Doctor and Mrs. Pennington own that property and I know that it was donated to OHSU. I want to know if part of the trust, their trust was then is this is donated land and since it was donated land, who owns the title to that property now?
That you would have to take up with Washington County. Washington County will can tell you who has the title and the rights to that land.
So then how do we, if, how do we go about then proposing all this development that's going to be going on if we don't even really know? You know, the, the owner of the, the title.
The, that is, the Pennington property is not going to be discussed tonight, just so you know, that's what I was just saying.
Okay.
Okay, but as far as who the land owner is, that is done by Washington County, they go through the paperwork to approve who the property owners are and will not approve a annexation or any type of land use decision until they have proven who the valid owners are.
Okay, so that'll be, that'll be a while. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any other comments from citizens, residents?
We do have one other, I'm a citizen's comment, but I'd like to sanitize the station, so if you give me a moment between.
Mayor, this is Anthony Stewart here for Western Oregon. If I could speak for thirty seconds, that'd be great, too.
Sure, while he's sanitizing the station, sure.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Again, my name is Anthony Stewart. Good evening. I'm here for Western Oregon Dispensary. We'd like to know the council's progress with the review of the city's cannabis related development code. It's a number of things that have been discussed, want to know the progress since we were last in front of you. Ms. Rawson addressed a few issues, issues that were discussed in correspondence today. With a simple theme, the current council is free to correct the error of past councils. Here, we think the best way to do so would be to direct the city team to develop a plan text amendment and prioritize its presentation to council. We don't think this needs to be concurrent, excuse me, sequential to the community outreach. We think the community outreach can be a part of this process. And we'd like to establish a timeline for that. We appreciate the council's attention and as always, we are available for any questions if you might happen.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Stewart. I assuming that Don Hudson slash our city manager will get back to you. Sorry about the truck going by. On the timeline, we still anticipate going out to a public comment period, a public meeting, if you will, virtually to get feedback on the ideas that we proposed at our last city council meeting when we talked about some alternatives to zoning changes to marijuana. But don't she, one of them will probably get back to you on when they anticipate that participation, participation process to begin.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time. Thank you, council.
Yes, Mayor, we'll get with staff and come up with that timeline, work with the council and then we'll get back to them.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Les Mathers. I live at the corner of Southwest Norwood Road and Eighty Second Avenue. My property butts up, we're on the east side of I five. I have three questions, I think. What, if this zoning is allowed to pass, what, excuse me, if this annexation is allowed to pass, what kind of zoning would be possible?
We can't get into that right now because the ordinance hearing has been postponed and we can't have ex parte communications about this until we make a adjudication.
Is a potential multi-housing, large number, would you, would you guess?
It's zoned for low to medium residential development, yes.
Okay, okay. Do all the streets that supply this neighborhood with traffic? They all come from Norwood Road?
No.
No.
You can look at their annex, the plan they submitted. I think a lot of your questions will get answered there. We reviewed it last city council meeting. And they have a couple of maps and it might answer that question for you.
Okay, will I see that later on this evening?
No, we're not hearing this tonight because the applicant has asked for a postponement.
I see. Okay, well, that was it, I think. Yeah, that is, that one answers the other to a great degree and the other one I didn't answer yet.
Right, go ahead and go, go to the city's website and you can go to the link for the last city council meeting. And you can review the application materials and you'll see a lot of your questions answered right there.
Great, thank you.
When it comes back up, attend the city meeting.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, that being it, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Those items that consent to gender are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of item number one, consider, consideration of resolution number five, five, one, seven, dash, twenty. Accepting coronavirus emergency supplemental funding CESF grant funds to support the city of Walton Police Department. Item number two, consideration of resolution number five, five, one, eight, dash, twenty. Authorizing the city manager to execute an agreed upon one year extension of the collective bargaining agreement. CBA with American Federation of State, City and Municipal Employees Ask Me Local Four, two, two. Item number three, consideration of approval of change in liquor license application for mod pizza. And finally, item number four, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for El Ranchito Allegre, Inc. Would anybody like any of these items pulled off the consent agenda tonight?
Our motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda is ready and discussion on the motions. All right, so I'll go with the screens here. Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote yes also. It is approved. Moving on to public hearings, I've been told, I've asked Sean about this or city attorney. This is not quasi judicial, it's just a regular hearing. Kind of freaked me out that a no parking stuff would be quasi judicial, but just a mistake in the heading here. So the council will now conduct a public hearing on ordinance number one, four, four, three, dash, twenty. To rename a portion of Southwest one hundred and twentieth avenue to Southwest one hundred and nineteenth avenue. ORS two, two, seven, dash, dash, two, two, seven, dot, one, twenty. Governance process for renaming streets. Under ORS two, two, seven, dot, one, twenty, the proposal to rename a street is first presented to the planning commission for a recommendation of approval of the street name change. Upon receiving the recommendation from the planning commission, the city council must then hold a public hearing on the street name change. The planning commission recommended approval of the name change at its August twentieth, twenty, twenty, planning commission meeting. The council will now open to the public a hearing to consider renaming a portion of Southwest one hundred and twentieth avenue to Southwest one hundred and nineteenth. The council will hear a brief presentation from city staff, followed by any persons wishing to testify in favor of the name change. Followed by any persons wishing to testify against the name change. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the council entered deliberations and vote on whether to approve ordinance number one, four, four, three, dash, twenty. We'll now hear from city staff.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Kim McMillan, I'm here with Kim McMillan tonight. City engineer for Twelton, so she has been doing all the work on this, so she's gonna present a brief staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. This project is before you tonight, we're requesting approval of changing Southwest one twentieth right of way to one nineteenth, and I'd like to share a couple of screenshots here. Whoop, I did the same thing as what happened. Let me get the other one, I'm sorry. I practiced today as my first run with screen sharing. And here we go.
Always when the pressure's on.
I know, I'm sorry, this is so embarrassing.
Don't worry about it.
First I did a vicinity map, our GIS guys did this, Tom put it together, so you could see where we're talking about, in case you're not familiar with this site. It is one nineteenth right of way that was in Washington County. So if you look at the star there, it's over near the PGE I O C construction and
Not seeing the map right now.
Oh. It says it's sharing.
Kim, you only shared the one folder, you need to share the screen, not the, just the folder.
Oh my goodness, let's see. Says new share, is that right? Screen. Share. No.
There you go.
Is it there?
Now we can see it.
Thank you. All right, so where the star is, is the location of one twentieth right of way, and it's the piece that jogs over from the existing one twentieth right of way, so we're before you tonight to ask for approval to rename that to one nineteenth. That will better align it with the street grid that we use for addressing and for the emergency services. Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency. And this was recently annexed when the Amazon site went in and they needed to complete a half street improvement. So I'm going to try a new share and see if I can do the other screen. That's the piece there. This is the PGE site here to the west. There's Edel Street, one fifteenth, and here's the Amazon site. And that is, that's all that we have for the staff report. If you have questions, please let me know.
All right. I guess we'll now hear from those that support the street name change. Anybody in Zoom land? Poll center, want to speak in support?
There's nobody at the poll center anymore, sir.
Okay, so I'm assuming there's one in the poll center who proposes the street name change, anybody in the Zoom meeting? Hearing nothing.
All staff in the Zoom meeting now.
All right, okay, so questions for staff?
Can we go back to faces?
Hey, Kim, can you stop sharing? Perfect.
All right, questions? You know, this is so controversial. Council Morrison.
Sorry, I just, a technical question, usually this is the kind of stuff we cover with Sherilyn, but she ran out of town on us and so I didn't have a chance. So I'll try to be really brief here, but how on earth did that ever get named one? I don't understand the process of why it became one twentieth in the first place when it wasn't just an extension of that street. Is there a technicality in the code? And if it's a long explanation, I'll bring it up with Jeff sometime over beer when COVID ends, but I just was curious, that's all.
My guess is it is an old Washington County hangover from when the streets were going to go further south, and so it just jogged over and it skirted around the tigered sand and gravel. So that's my short explanation, but beer with Jeff is always encouraged.
That's, yeah, that's, that's as good an explanation as I'd probably get from Jeff, so thank you very much, Kim.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one, four, four, three, dash, twenty. Do I have to do read by title only or what?
No, just approve.
Yeah, unfortunately, it is, it is a special ordinance and I apologize, but yes, we'll have to do first and second reading.
First reading.
I have a first and a second. Two, we have first reading of ordinance number one, four, three, three, dash, twenty. Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote yes also. Sean?
Thank you. Ordinance number fourteen, forty-three, dash, twenty, an ordinance approving the renaming, renaming of a portion of Southwest one hundred and twentieth avenue to Southwest one hundred and nineteenth avenue.
Go for it, pretty.
Okay, I move to for a second reading of ordinance number one, four, four, three, dash, twenty.
By title only.
By title only.
And I'll second that.
We've been here a lot longer. I have a first and a second. To have second reading, here's number one, four, four, I'm sorry, one, four, three, three, dash, twenty. Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
Vote I also, all right.
Ordinance number fourteen, forty-three, dash, twenty, an ordinance approving the renaming of a portion of Southwest one hundred and twentieth avenue to Southwest one hundred and nineteenth avenue.
Okay, and then I move to adopt ordinance number one, four, four, three, dash, twenty.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number one, four, three, three, dash, twenty, any discussion on those motions? Right, Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also, it passes unanimously, thank you. All right.
Do you have a point of order question? I think we said that, I said, think on the last motion, we said the ordinance number wrong. I think we added an extra three.
One, four, three, three, dash, twenty.
One, four, four, three, dash, twenty.
One, four, three, three, dash, twenty.
Mine says one, four, four, three, dash, twenty.
So does mine.
Yeah. Yeah, fourteen, forty-three.
Okay.
Are we good, Sean?
I guess my should we do it again, Sean?
Did you, did you make a motion on fourteen, thirty, did you just rename the, the ordinance wrong? Is that?
I, I run it right up the page, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I heard fourteen, forty-three, I think we're fine.
Okay, but I think it was
Oh, wait a minute. See, I got two different versions of them, now I see the confusion, thank you Nancy. Now I got one, it says one, four, three, three, and one says four, four, yeah, okay. So it's one, four, four, three, dash, twenty.
Correct.
I think the people that made the motion made them with the correct number, but I think when we did the, we summarized and went to the second and the final, we said it wrong, I don't know if that makes how much a difference that makes.
So it can be a Scrivener's error, but if you want to go ahead and, you know, vote to approve it with the correct number, I am, I am great with that.
All right, we'll do that.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'll move to approve ordinance number one, four, four, three, dash, twenty.
And I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion, a second to approve or adopt ordinance number one, four, four, three, dash, twenty. Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't end up like approving a nuclear plant in the middle of the city or something, you know?
Good eye, good eye, all right.
Anything can happen.
All right, moving on to general business. Consideration of resolution number of five, five, one, six, dash, twenty prohibiting parking on portions of Southwest one hundred and nineteenth avenue and Southwest Itell Street.
All right, that one is Kim again, so this is Jeff Fox, Public Works Director, and I'm going to just directly hand it over to Kim.
Okay, I'm going to try to share the screen again, I'm just going to try not to panic.
Deep breath, deep breath.
Good practice.
Totally. All right. Okay.
We don't quite see it yet.
Yeah, I'm hitting, I'm hitting the new share. Now can you see it? Nope. All right. Still not?
Now we can see it.
Oh my goodness, okay. These are such great exhibits that Tom did. So this one we're asking for your approval to install no parking signs on one nineteenth, which you just renamed from one twentieth and Edel Street on both sides, which is under construction by the PGE crew. So that would just be on both sides there because we only have twenty-four feet of pavement improved. And the one nineteenth is for emergency access and was a land use condition. Then Edel has the same issues, we want to make sure we have emergency access, so when these two streets have the completion of their street improvement, full street here and then the other half of one nineteenth, then we could consider removing those no parking signs, we'd bring those back to council for consideration. That is it.
That's quick. A likely we have to go through all the rigmarole, it's not a public hearing, so it's a lot simpler. Any questions for staff? Council Morrison.
Yeah, Kim and Jeff, is there a way to, to tag this so that, you know, ten years from now when that road is finally completed and the question comes up, why is there no parking there? And someone says, I don't know, council approved it years ago and that's just what council did, and everyone's scratching their head as opposed to being proactive on this and, and so that staff is aware that somewhere down the road, it comes back as, you know, getting rectified.
I am not sure if we can do that in a GIS layer, but it is in one land use decision and it would be in these council records, but I'm not sure about a GIS layer or a note to file for engineering.
I have a question if nobody else does.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking at the executive summary because I could have sworn I saw something in here about a date certain where we take them away or a certain milestone, but I could be dreaming, but go ahead, Nancy.
I think I'm sorry to interrupt, I thought she said the milestone would be when the remainder of the improvement done on the street, road. Street?
Street, yeah.
Road?
Yeah, I think that is in the staff report as well, is that it would be no parking until that was complete. However, I don't know if your approval tonight can approve the action of removing the signs, I'm looking to Sean, I'm sure he can see me looking right at him.
I'm seeing this sentence here, it says, the no parking signs can be removed with the future construction of the remainder of Idol Street, so. Any other questions?
Well, my, my question was just a question about workforce parking. Because obviously needing a no parking sign to me intimates that we've got people parking along there in the trucks and the emergency vehicles. Everybody can't pass because it's narrower than normal. I just don't want to do like what we've had in other areas where we put in no parking areas or permit parking and it pushes traffic parking problems off on the neighboring businesses. Will there be sufficient parking for workforce and employees with these no parking zones put up?
What we found when we completed that half street on one nineteenth was immediately employees from the surrounding vis, businesses parked both sides and then there was no way to get a fire truck through there. And so we have posted signs on that west side to provide that access in light of coming to council to get your formal approval for those signs. I know that the employer that's using that street side, they also have their vans there that shuttle employees to other parking lots throughout the city. I pulled up there one day and there were two or three of those larger vans. And so that's how they're handling their employee overflow. And the area on Edel Street that we're showing no parking, there's no parking there now, so all we're doing is opening up the street from one fifteenth to one twentieth, providing a secondary outlet from that area. So we're not taking away parking that they would have had at this point.
Okay, I, I apologize, I must be looking at this completely wrong, I thought we were taking away parking on one hundred and nineteenth on that one side of the street.
It's, it was never wide enough for parking on that side. It's wide enough and improved fully on the east side with curb side, Lita stormwater filters and sidewalks, so it's got the full half street improvement there and then it has some pavement on the west side, but not enough to support two parking, you know, two sides of parking and then travel. So next developer who would come in on the west side after annexing, of course, would then complete it with more pavement, curb, plant or sidewalk.
Any other questions or comments? Or motions? It's quiet. So at the Zoom one, want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to do we just go to approve resolution five, five, one, six, dash, twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Give her a second.
I'll second it.
Right, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number five, five, one, six, dash, twenty, make sure I'm writing the right number. Any discussion on those motions? All right, Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also, it's unanimous, all right. Next up, consideration of economic recovery programming for business assistance, childcare scholarships and future disbursements. I, there's Jonathan, he moved, he just moved again.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I am going to recap where we've been and what council's priorities have been year to date. So last council meeting, we addressed that we are getting nearly one point two million dollars in economic stabilization funds from both Business Oregon and Washington County through the CARES Act Economic Recovery and Relief Funds. And so two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of that is coming from Business Oregon. Two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of that will be our reimbursements for council's original economic stabilization fund. Then six hundred and eighty thousand dollars are CARES Act funding specifically targeted to our small business assistance that council approved in grant contract form at the last council meeting. So tonight, we want to ask, staff wants to ask council, do you wish do you wish to proceed with the program outlined for economic recovery as we present tonight? So where have we been? I want to highlight yet again, council's, uh, work on April fourteenth to distributed two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to fifty-four businesses, uh, during the Economic Stabilization Fund one point oh. Uh, that gave an average grant of forty-six hundred dollars with grants ranging from nine hundred to ten thousand dollars. And then on May twenty-sixth, council directed staff on their economic recovery plan that focused on four phases. Then July thirteenth, council approved the Business Oregon contract for thirty-five thousand dollars. Staff went back and reapplied again, and we had to come back because we needed a contract amendment on July twenty-seventh, so council approved the contract amendment, which allowed us to accept an additional one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, which would bring that up to, uh, two hundred, no, I got my math wrong. Well, anyway, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from Business Oregon. Um, and then council also provided, uh, priorities and identified programs for staff to work with Washington County onto dispersals of the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So tonight, with all that said, we are here to present this plan to you, based on your priorities from July twenty-seventh, and what is allowed under both the Business Oregon and also Washington County's contract are the Economic Stabilization Fund, childcare scholarships, and future disbursements. So the first one we want to briefly talk about is the Economic Stabilization Fund, and we're calling it two point oh. Uh, it is basically a hybrid model of the Business Oregon Contract and the City of Tuolatin's Economic Stabilization Fund. Some of the key, uh, points that we want to point out is, we only changed a few eligibility requirements from the original proposal, and that is the elimination of physical storefront. Uh, we received a number of business applications in the first round that a lot of them didn't have a commercial storefront, and it using that experience, what we found out that a lot of people are either in a business park or in an office park or on second or third floors. And so, unfortunately, the first round, we were trying to get our feet, uh, moving as quickly as possible, because we didn't know what the future held, and so uh, we eliminated that criteria. We've also dropped down the number of business, uh, excuse me, number of employees from fifty-five to fifty, and that's just to round out, uh, a number, to make it easier on staff as well as our businesses. The judgment criteria remains the same, so we prioritize hospitality service. We prioritize hospitality service and, um, kind of, so, I don't know how I would frame it, I'm sorry, I'm stuttering tonight, because I'm, I think we're all having, uh, electronic issues. There we go. So, our judgment criteria will be giving priorities to those businesses affected by Governor Brown's executive orders, establishments operating at reduced capacity, those who have had larger economic impacts on revenue, and those who have not previously received funding from local, state, and federal sources. And we anticipate this launch on September first, we are slowly putting together both the application and the marketing materials, so if council is amenable with this plan, we will go ahead and launch it on September first, we'll start marketing it on Wednesday. Just some key points on this one, it'll be a three-week application process, we still want to honor council's original priority of, do not implement a first-come, first-served, uh, that helps remove any barriers and also provides, uh, an D I focus on those who may not have time, uh, or any, or any hindrances as such. We are partnering with the Business Recovery Center, they will be providing application assistance to all businesses, and then they can mail those applications to the City of Tuolatin on September twenty-second. Based on our business license list, the city is prepared to assist up to a hundred and forty businesses, that's going to be eighty-seven more than the Economic Stabilization Fund. And then, as we move into the future disbursements, if no additional restrictions occur, the city will be able to assist up to a hundred and ninety businesses altogether, uh, for both all three programs. And so, as we say, staff's goal is to ensure that we meet the needs as many businesses as possible, and we will utilize our existing network of contacts and our BRCs to ensure that all businesses have access in a proper time. The next, uh, proposed area of program funding are childcare scholarships. So we, uh, given what council directed last meeting, when staff originally proposed just kind of focusing on providing childcare facilities, business assistance, we took the hybrid model of providing scholarships for those that are need-based, and we came up with the idea of up to one hundred thou- one hundred, up to one thousand dollars per child per month for a maximum of three months. And the eligibility for those will be you are or a partner currently or have been unemployed for longer than four weeks, your past or current unemployment assistance does not exceed one hundred percent of your original employment income, or you have had reduced work hours of ten or more hours per week. We've already got a list of the thirty-three at-home and commercial childcare facilities located in Tuolatin, and our efforts will be to go through them to provide the applications to both their customers or those that have entered in some sort of economic hardship, or just to partner with them because they know how to promote their services. The city intends to also work with some of our community-based organizations to let them know that this is, uh, a program that is being offered by the city through the CARES Act funding. Uh, and so, we anticipate launching this in mid-September, so the first round of dispersals will be for October's childcare payments that may be due. And then the last one is future disbursements, council on the tw- uh, on the last city council meeting, they wanted to set aside an amount for any kind of preparation that any government mandate or economic reductions may occur, and as we've heard over the last week, there had been twain from the governor's level on down of potential restrictions, both economic and social, and so we've wanted to set aside that if another economic closure happens, we can deploy those funding in addition to the Economic Stabilization Fund as such from beginning of March. And if no reductions occur between now and November fifteenth, with the, which these funds are required to be spent, we will do a Economic Stabilization Fund Round Three that is similar to the one that we presented earlier, just here in this presentation. As, I wanted to point out that those funds have to be distributed by November fifteenth, based on the CARES Act guidelines, because we are a pass-through organization, even though CARES Act is determined on December thirty-first, because we are a sub-recipient, Washington County has an additional stipulation of November fifteenth. So next steps, if, um, council is okay with this, staff will submit council's plan to Washington County for approval, and then staff will return at the appropriate time with budget rev- resolutions before any disbursements are made, and then we anticipate the launch of these programs on September first. So again, question to council, does council wish to proceed with this program outline for economic?
Thanks, Jonathan. Questions? Comments? Bridgette?
Thanks, Jonathan, for putting all that together. And it makes a lot of sense. I guess my question was, and I don't know, um, if it was a separate bunch of money about that we were talking about, help with, um, with, um, eviction prevention and uh, utility bills and things like that.
I can feel that one, Jonathan, if you want. So, Washington County, uh, Jonathan and staff presented our plan to Washington County, and they rejected two pieces ours, the utility relief and the rental slash mortgage relief, saying that they already have a program, uh, that they're having community action implement.
Yeah.
And that six million dollars has been set aside, uh, for residential mortgage and for renter assistance, and three million dollars for utility assistance. Yeah, I'm sorry, via Clean Water Services. So, um, I went back and forth with Chair Harrington about that, letting her know that what we anticipated was some of our folks, uh, not getting some of that money, and we wanted to have a little bit of a safety net. And she asked me to wait and circle back with her in September to see how, uh, community action is doing in getting that money out. Uh, she's a numbers kind of person, so she would prefer to see numbers, and we could look at numbers to see if our residents are not getting the funds they need under those two program, those two programs for community action. Um, so Jonathan tweaked the plan to something that the county would approve, and I will certainly circle back with Chair Harrington on this, about the two things we asked about, was basic needs also, was one of the things we talked about, but, um, the county wanted us to stick to the contract, and they heard what I had to say, other mayors were on board with what I said, uh, this, I have a local flexibility at the city level, and the chair just wants to give community action a chance to do what they're supposed to do.
Well, I guess my, my question with that is, um, weren't we gonna use Community Action Network with what we were gonna do as well?
Yeah. Well, we, we probably have a dispersionation, the city wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
So, the Chair Harrington, basically, she wants community action to do this and want to be the focus of it and not have each city do their own thing, and kind of muddle the waters unless, uh, like I said, we come back in September, mid-September with our chair meeting with her, and, uh, we find the numbers unsatisfactory for our residents in Tuolatin, then I will stop my heels again.
Well, thanks for your work on that, and thanks for the explanation, because I thought it seemed different. And, um, and also, I'm glad that we're gonna be helping our businesses, and, um, and, like I said earlier, from the PAB meeting, Community Action Network has increased their capacity and their effectiveness in reaching people. Um, of course, my concerns are similar where, um, you know, my other question, I guess, around all this is, how do we, how do we track our residents, who's being evicted? And, um, and also, I, I guess, I mean, this is really off-topic now, because we're talking about it in a different way, but I just want to put my concern out there that, um, that there are in my, in the information out there, that there are also support services that run through Tigard as well, and, um, making sure that we promote the Community Action Network program and the other Tigard programs to our residents, um, because I think sometimes it's really difficult for people to put these connections together, because, for various reasons, but I think geographic barriers, transportation barriers, and language, lots of different barriers, so I just really want to be sure that we're communicating well to residents about those, um, programs, especially since we're not doing them ourselves, but thank you very much for designing a program that the county will approve, and, um, and good luck to all the businesses, and I also am glad that we're thinking about people and their childcare needs, which are gonna be great, especially with, um, schools delaying opening.
The eviction moratorium is still in place, but no one can be evicted right now, but, uh, when the moratorium's over is when the issues are gonna be, like you mentioned earlier, Council Brooks, when the, uh, the bill comes due and folks don't have money, this can be very, uh, critical for them to have these funds.
Well, that's why, that's a very important point, and the other piece around this is, some people are being evicted anyway, and they don't have the information, and, um, they don't know that they're, you know, there's, there's some people that are just saying the wrong information, or are just not even, uh, they don't know the rules, um, well, yet. And that was, that's another question too, is, um, is when we look at the future rounds of funding, if we give landlords, um, relief to help offset, um, accumulated bills of deferred rent, because, um, and I know they're gonna be designing programs to help put the back rent slowly into, um, back into the hands of their, their landlords, um, but I know that the landlords will need help, and I know that the tenants will need help after these, um, things pile up.
I might, I would just like to say quickly that Community Development has a webpage called Housing Resources with many different resources on there, including resources for utility assistance, and we have, um, used social media to promote that page, but this seems like a good public opportunity to get that webpage out there, it is one place where there's multiple resources that have been culled together.
And then I'm just curious if we have links to those resources on our website.
We do, yes, yeah.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, I was, um, just looking at the childcare scholarships program, so my question is, um, we allocated a hundred thousand dollars for that program, am I right? John, okay, so how is that gonna be? I guess it's, it sits here work to ensure that our local childcare facilities are sta- stabilized and operational during, during and after the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So I'm hoping that this message can be more like, uh, towards the parents, making sure, so, because it does, it get, when I read it, I think, I think of the facilities, but it doesn't tell me as a parent that I have this, um, this, this available for me, and then, um, if that's going to our facilities, childcare facilities, how do parents get access to that? How is that?
Yeah, great question, counselor, um, so, the, what you're reading in this staff report is basically a verbatim proposal that we submitted to the county, so it's kind of covering our bases, but what we intend to do is market solely to the parent or the guardian of the child that will utilize these funds, and as such, we'll go through the childcare facility to access those individuals, and so it'll be an application, um, that they will distribute to either their customers or potential customers or lost customers because of lost revenue or income. And the application will be specifically targeted, and so will the promotional materials to the actual parent. Uh, just the payment will go to the business, that way we kind of cover our bases, but also balance council priorities.
Thank you.
And that one hundred thousand dollars, real quick, if it, if that's our baseline, we don't know the demand that may be needed, so we actually may be coming back to council uh, with a recommendation or at least a discussion regarding the five hundred and ten that will be set aside to say, it looks like we have a lot more need than what we anticipated, and so here's an idea, would you like to add more to this fund? If so, we can do that, because we'll already have the, uh, the kind of the foundation and the application process set.
Okay, because I, I did think that will be what, a hundred kids or something like that?
Uh, I, I don't know, uh, because we're basing it on per family, and they could have one or more children, or guardians or custodians.
And just, FYI, the county is also awarding, they have a separate pot of money, this gets confusing. They have a separate pot of money that they're gonna be doing grants and awards to home-based childcare facilities. Uh, it's not a big amount of money, if I remember right, it's like nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars literally, to protect the businesses from, the home-based businesses from tax. So those, uh, you know, home-based childcare facilities can ask for that nine 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 dollars, uh, to help them, um, pay down their debt, if you will, for other PPE, all the stuff they're gonna have to do to keep their facility clean and tidy for the kids, that the county's gonna be awarding that money also. But I think that's our Nancy's hand up, yep.
Thanks. Um, this is wonderful, and I just, when I think that we have one point two million dollars to help our community with, I mean, I mean, pause over that amount of money for a minute, that is a huge amount of good that we can do in our community, and I'm so thrilled that we're able to do this. So thrilled that we're able to do this, um, I have a question on the childcare scholarship. And on the eligibility requirement. Um, just from my own experience with some of my own friends that are now in a work from home situation. And the kids are no longer in school. It, you know how that's causing some serious problems and so I'm wondering, for people that had their children. In maybe like preschool or kindergarten where there isn't that happening anymore at the schools. But a parent is working, you know, they're working from home, but it's just very difficult to work full-time from home. And have such a small child that needs such intense supervision all day long. And it almost is like creating a need for childcare for a family that didn't have that need for childcare. Because they had preschool or they had kindergarten that their children were attending, so I'm wondering. Is there a way to perhaps expand eligibility just a little bit to people like that that are sort of. In that particular instance where they haven't maybe had to go outside of their own family or friends or lose school district. For childcare, but now they are because the way circumstances are. Okay.
Yeah, so if you, uh, so I'm not a parent, so I, I am operating on just kind of what I've talked with our fellow staff members. Who are parents as well as just kind of community members, if you have any recommendations on eligibility. Uh, on what you think would be the best fit for this community and our community, by all means, if it's. Do you work outside the home more than X amount of hours? We'd, we'd have to establish an income baseline then, uh, as, because we want to hit our um. Most need families, but if you have, if you want to add any eligibility to this, absolutely.
Let me curious to see what other people's thoughts are, but I know I do have acquaintances that are all of a sudden are going to have. Very, very small children running around the house that, and they're being forced to work from home and it's, so it's a whole new dynamic plus. You know, if they seek outside childcare, like you say, I mean, that's. Seven, eight hundred dollars a month all of a sudden, that they're going to have to pay that they haven't been paying because the kids have been in school, so. I'm just curious what other people's thoughts are, Sean, you look like you're laughing.
Just saying, seventy hundred dollars is low, I think now.
Yeah, all of us who have paid childcare in the past, we, or continue to pay.
Hundred dollars a month. Yeah, I actually have um coworkers as well that are working from home and we're in Zoom meetings. And we're a hundred percent right now working from home, my, my job. And they will, they get interrupted, they have to stop their meeting, they have to, oh my gosh, somebody's. You know, so it's always that, or something happened in the background that I'm like, is your child okay, you know? So I think that um, that's an eligibility for, and, and I know a lot of the, the ladies are pretty nervous. Because they're like, um, I don't know, I can't afford to pay so much money a month, they're full-time employees, they just can't. They're just working from home, but they can't, they can't really like concentrate on work and they can't concentrate on their kid. And then once the kid starts school, they have to actually sit down there and next, my understanding is that you sit next to the child with, while you do all these. I mean, all these, you know, like studies and, I mean, I don't know how, how they're doing it, just. But it would be nice to have like maybe one or two, two days out of the week of relief, so they can, you know. Actually concentrate on work while the child can go to a, um, you know, a place where they can learn and also be cared for. So I, that's a good point, Nancy, that you brought up because I see it all the time, every day, actually.
Yeah, I, I think that it's a good idea to just um having a line for absorbing extra costs, not just um. Uh, past costs, but absorbing new costs and then you could um put the percentages in that work. So that there could still be needs-based um decision-making. And I also had a follow-up question because um, with the childcare, I mean, this is something. That I became really acutely aware of with that um eviction prevention and the additional risks to. Um, single parents, single moms, single dads um who are having trouble absorbing, so I think that. Noting those dynamics as well and um, and then finally, my last question is. With the business um grants, those also are available to childcare. Um, operators as well, not just like, are those um, are they able to apply? Because I, yeah, I think it's both ends.
You're correct, counselor.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you, Jonathan, uh excellent work as usual. So my question is, we had some emails from Don Hudson going back and forth regarding the utility. Part of the CARES Act with Washington County and what's not been addressed and wasn't addressed in the emails on the utility. Uh, assistance is what are we doing for Clackamas County residents and is this? How, how are we going to incorporate those residents who need childcare assistance and there's. I know there's a lot of, of doctors' offices in Clackamas County uh that have been affected. Um, that wish they could have applied to our initial fund, apparently they did not. Um, but a lot of the dentists did in, in the downtown core area, so where do we stand on, on Clackamas County?
Well, so I can address the utility side, I am still working on how we incorporate those. Um, residents that are on our delinquent list that could participate. I had a conversation with the League of Oregon Cities today about how do we potentially. Get into some of the money that is being allocated out the, from the state to cities and counties. Their recommendation would be to contact our legislators, uh, because they would have to go through the, the E-board to. A-ask for that allocation separately. I'm reaching out to Clackamas County itself, but I also have another call back into Washington County. Uh, and broaching it a little different way as well about the way their program is set up and that's the fact that they are. Utility customers of ours that come into Clean Water Services revenues and other things, so. I've got calls into a number of different places uh to make sure that those residents are part of the program as well. What I would like to do um is just ask if there's an issue from the council tonight. Of if, of moving forward with the program and asking Community Action if they can incorporate those uh customers into that program. Well, we might have to backfill the money in that, I think we can potentially backfill from some of those other sources that I'm reaching out to. But the worst case scenario would be that it, we would have to find uh other city funds to backfill that, I'm anticipating. That may look like about five, maybe ten thousand dollars total, so it's not a big amount of money, uh that would, if council doesn't. Have any concerns about, go ahead and get, have those conversations with Community Action. To make sure that they'll accept the applications from any Twalton resident and then we'll figure out the, the payment side of it. Um, but in the meantime, hopefully I'll get funding from the other sources and that won't be an issue. You, but that way I can get the program out there and we could advertise it as a Twalton resident, not just a Washington County resident.
Okay, and Jon, Jonathan, with respect to this program that we have, that you've just presented.
I believe it's just Washington County only businesses, correct, Jonathan?
Uh, yes.
What do we, what, what kind of plan do we have to take care of the businesses and the residents that are in Clackamas County?
Uh, if I could interrupt, I mean, we also have funding from Business Oregon that's part of this program. So that's not um specific to one county.
Okay, so we, we will be able to offer the same program then to all residents of Twalton and all businesses of Twalton.
Yes, sir.
Including Clackamas County.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my, was my only question is, it wasn't really clear to me and I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Yeah, just the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars is dedicated to Washington County, but the two seventy-eight and two fifty-two reimbursement can be applied to both. So we'll ensure that for sure. So uh, real quick, I just jotted down both Counselor Brooks, Res and Grimes' suggestion. See if this is okay for the childcare addition eligibility. Newer increased cost of childcare at ten percent or more of household income and eligible for households above a hundred thousand dollars. Priority will be given to those making less than sixty thousand dollars.
I like it and the other thing I thought of while we were sitting here, I'm sorry to um add to, but I do know that a lot of times with. Um, assessing need that anybody who's receiving SNAP benefits or. Um, uh, assistance for lunches and those kinds of things are prioritized as well. So those low-income indicators, I think are really important at this time. I don't know if that was already included in your thinking, but I just wanted to bring that up as far as just from a, a social services perspective.
Counselor Grimes.
Thanks, um, Jonathan, did you say? How homes with up to a sixty thousand dollar income, is that what you said?
Uh, priority will be given to those making sixty thousand dollars or less. We can.
Well, I'm wondering if we should increase that a little bit because as. As was pointed out by everybody here, when you're talking about, I was, okay, six hundred, eight hundred, I was crazy, right? You know, twelve hundred dollars or more, if you have multiple children um needing healthcare, I mean. That, that hits, I mean, that hits low income, but that, I mean, even if you're making seventy-five thousand, I mean, that's. That's a lot of money for a household to all of a sudden have to um be faced with. And I think that they should be eligible up to maybe seventy-five thousand for. You know, at least a partial scholarship of some nature, because, you know, I, I just think. It's so prevalent and it's so expensive, but I think it's going to hit a lot broader group of people than we're assuming that it's going to hit. And there may be more resources already available for people that are on like a below, a lower spectrum of overall household income. And you might have this gap of people that are having a hardship, but perhaps don't qualify for other programs. So I would suggest we raise the household cap.
Okay, then, would, would then, would council be amenable to just eliminating that last sentence and just say. Ineligible for households above a hundred thousand dollars? And then so everyone making ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars or less will qualify for this program?
I, I think so, I mean, if you think about it, a, a couple that has schooling kids. Um, even if they're making um over a hundred, they're, the, the. Every school takes, takes a good portion of that time for them, you know, like six hours out of the day, so. Um, and they're not anymore, they're, they're now at home and now they have to do, they have to work. And they have to also be schoolteachers and they have to like, you know, work for, I don't know, I, I think that's a. It sounds better to me than ten up to sixty-five thousand or sixty-four thousand. I don't know, I don't have, I don't have children, I know my sisters and her, their spouses and I know this, this has really. And they're, they have these incomes, both of them, but it's really hard on them, not because, not just the, the portion of the money that they have to pay. But also the time that they have to spend with them and now they don't, they, like, we leave them from work kind of thing, you know? Um, so I know that my sister, I was precisely talking to my sister about this, she's like, if I can have two days out of the week where I can. I can send my kids to a, to a, you know, location where they can help them with their school while I can do my work, uh, that would be so helpful. And, you know, I don't know, I, I'm not, I, those, those who earn a little bit more than. And my sister might have a different opinion, I don't know, but parents can give us your opinion, so if you're out there, you have your. Your parent, I don't want to limit this to those who actually need relief, you know, just because they make a little bit more. I don't know, I just.
Well, I, I guess what I might suggest is that you let us um take it back because we were, we need a little bit of time to refine this. Um, and ref, and you're probably hearing my kids right now, um. Let me get my concentration back, anyhow, um, if, we'll take this back and refine it a little bit. Because we need to put the applications together for the um childcare facilities. Um, one, one thought though is that the Washington County median family income. Um, right now is eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars, so that might be a starting point. Um, one of the things we could think about is that if you're making median family income or below. Perhaps you're eligible for the one thousand dollar um per child per month, if you're making above that in percentages. Then there's kind of a, a phased approach, so you get some assistance between eighty-one and a hundred. Kind of, kind of a thing, so um, I think we could work something out so that um. When you're in the middle of a meeting, your kids have somewhere to go.
Like scholarship, like, okay, it's a hundred percent scholarship, but then you're, you might get fifty percent scholarship, the other one might get. Sixty or seventy-five percent or twenty-five percent, that makes more sense, right? That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Right. Counselor Kellag.
Yeah, so given the length and depth of the discussion, I think it's, it's at least pretty obvious to me that we need to put more funding into this program. Um, the childcare one I'm talking about, we've got four hundred and ten thousand, we're holding off to the side. Um, we're giving six hundred thousand on a business program that was two hundred and fifty thousand originally. Um, so it seems to me it's a little disproportionate um in terms of what the need that's been expressed here tonight. There's obviously a ton of need in the business community, but um, not only is the childcare need large. Um, but it's also pending very soon, um, Tiger Twalton School District sends its kids back to school on September fourteenth. Um, and so the idea of, of refining this program, I think is, is a good one, but there's also that in my mind, immediate. Sort of deadline that if we're going to do a budget, budget resolution to fund these programs, then we ought to fund them, you know, at a higher level. And then if there's leftover money, we underestimated the need, whatever the case may be, we can always go back and, and move that money back into the contingency fund. So would be my recommendation that we, we look at at least two hundred thousand, maybe even two fifty for the childcare piece. Um, and then my only other point on it would be, um, as it's written up in the staff report, it's both for Twalton residents and workers who come. To Twalton who are not from Twalton and I would stress that uh, while we love the people that commute in. Um, the money was given to the city to support the residents of the city. Um, and so I would have preference to the residents of the city and then whatever we want to do about the income level, I think, um, you know, Aquila had a good idea. Um, starting with the median income and giving preference uh, below that level, I think is, you know, makes sense. So I would look at three potential items for discussion here, one, increasing um the amount for the program. Uh, looking at only local residents as opposed to commuters in and then also uh basing somewhat off of income and hopefully doing it tonight. Uh, you know, so we can have the resolutions and everything at the next meeting and get the program out and going before the schools go back into session. And I'll apologize in advance for extending the meeting at least fifteen or twenty minutes here.
So I, I don't think you're going to get a lot of pushback, Counselor Brooks.
I like very much what you said, um, Counselor Kellag. My only addition to that would also be um prioritizing people in need as much as I understand hardship. There's the other piece around wanting to prevent um homeless problems in our city. And people that will actually lose their housing based on need issues, so the very vulnerable. Um, people, in my opinion, need to be prioritized as far as one. Um, and not have a lottery type of a situation. And if we need more money towards it, I'm with you, Counselor Kellag.
That's Morrison.
Sorry, I'm really slow on, on the button, I apologize, um, Counselor. Sorry, I'm really slow on, on the button. I apologize. Um, Counselor Kellogg has, I think, some excellent suggestions. I also agree with what, um, Aquila said with respect to the, hers suggestion. So I, I'm on board with, uh, what's being discussed and, um, uh, agree with Counselor Kellogg and his recommendations.
So just, uh, so the, are people going, do you want two hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand for childcare scholarships?
I don't think two hundred and fifty is going to be enough. I hope I'm wrong, but I agree with Counselor Kellogg. There is going to be, based on the discussion I'm hearing from other counselors and based on what I know from people I'm hearing from, there was, that's made, I, I hope I'm wrong, but it may be a most popular program that we're offering. And, um, we can see how it plays out. Um, but I would, I would go with the, with the two, two fifty, just in round numbers. It's, and it's a good number. I mean, you know, it reads well for no other reason.
Yeah. I got no problem with two fifty.
Yeah.
Two fifty works for me.
And I like Aquila's, um, average household income suggestion. I think that is great also. So, thank you, Counselor Kellogg, for your input.
I like the fact that we prioritize, um, what, uh, Counselor Brooks says on income and, but also people that are, you know, that are here in Tuolton as well. I think it's important to be careful. We take care of the, our, our kids here in our, in our area first and because I think it's important that, um, we're providing that money in our community. Thank you.
Aquila and Jonathan, you got the three changes we just discussed?
So yes, yes, sir. Uh, let's see.
The two fifty, sort of a hundred, uh, Tuolton residents only. And the Aquila suggestion on the eighty thousand, the median income level and, uh, full scholarships versus percentage? That sum up what, uh, everyone liked?
Yes, with, with that also adding, we were going to take away the eligibility requirement of unemployment.
What?
Me?
Yeah, we, I'm like, what are you talking about?
No, remember we were, when I first was bringing this up, I was saying that, um, one of the eligibility's for the childcare scholarship was needing to be you or your partner having been unemployed. And I was saying that.
Right.
You don't need to be unemployed to have the childcare issues, so.
Right.
I wanted that thing removed.
Now I'm tracking with you. All right.
There was, there was an alternative to.
I thought it was either a reduction in income or an addition in expense because I don't, I do think that it's really important that, um, we prioritize people in need as we're, you know, as we're doing those rating systems, like you know, um, mayor, when we go through those rating systems so that we make sure that we hit the people, if we do run into a lack of funds that are at the greatest need.
Right, and, and if you think it through, you know, the people who are unemployed right now, not only will have kids on their hands, but are also going to have to spend time trying to find a job and all the effort that goes with that. Uh, in addition to people who, if they don't get this type of assistance, may make the difference between being employed and unemployed because you got to take care of your kids first.
So what I'm hearing is for us to go back, refine this program, bring it back to your next meeting on the fourteenth of September.
We know, we want to get it done now so we can get a resolution.
Yeah.
Want to nail this tonight.
Wait.
So here's, here's a concern that I'm hearing as I, and I, I'm looking at Jonathan and Aquila as we're adding more things to, uh, the analysis of, of the applications. It's, is what is our capacity to take on analyzing income levels and so forth? Part of why we are using Community Action Network for those other programs is because they have the infrastructure in place to analyze, get, get that information about their household income. And so I would, Jonathan and Aquila, have you guys looked at how that we would do that on a, on an income analysis? On those applications?
So we do, we do have the application from, um, Community Action, but when we were initially proposing this idea, we weren't going to do an actual true income because we can't determine life expenses for every applicant, especially if there's a large number. And so we kind of settled down on the original four proposals. But if, if council has these four now of reduced income, increased cost, Tuolton residents and eighty thousand median in, median family income, we could take that now, but if we needed additional analysis, I, I agree with Don, we'd have to come back to, we, we'd need a little bit more time.
Because I know we want to get this out. Cities are getting their plans on. I understand we want to do this right, but don't want to rush it, but the needs coming like Counselor Kellogg said by mid-September.
I don't have a problem staying in those four parameters. I still would love, though, a checkmark box with, are you receiving any public assistance so that we have people that are in very high need also bracketed in?
That's for Kellogg.
Well, I was just going to say the money's not all going out the door on September first and, and to the extent that we wanted to audit anything, we've got three months to do that before the final check would go out to the recipients. And, uh, you know, I don't want to add to your workload, but, but I think the urgency here is real. Um, and the concerns about the timeline are, are relevant, but I think overridden by the fact that we need to get this out and, and, you know, September first, if we can have this program up and running, um, that's going to provide a lot of comfort to a lot of residents.
I, I feel confident that we can, um, put our heads together and, and find a way to uh, ask for whatever documentation we need to, to look at income, um, and that may just be part of the application process, but there, there are models out there. Um, the state of Oregon has a, a model that, that we had initially looked at. So I think there's some resources out there and we should be able to figure out a way to, to verify where people fall into the, those brackets of the median family income.
As long as the model doesn't come from the unemployment department. We don't want their help.
I don't think, I know you weren't looking for an answer.
So we'll go back and put together that program. If there's any concerns or anything, any red flags that come up, then we'll reach out to you and let you know. But it sounds like we have some, it sounds like we have direction. It sounds like we have some avenues that we can go look at to make sure that the program is set up, that we can get the information, we could run the program appropriately and get the need. I agree the needs out there, so making sure that we can get the applications, get the need, analyze them and get it all done in a, in a good manner. So let us go back and kind of put our heads together, make sure there's not any red flags that bring to your attention.
We very much appreciate it. All right. So is that, so you got what you needed on this, I assume? You good to go?
So if, if you're okay with the six hundred thousand for economic stabilization fund, two fifty for the childcare scholarships, and then now two, two, um, sixty for future dispersals, we have our marching orders. And like we did for the economic stabilization fund, we'll provide you weekly updates of what's occurring and how, how's it going. And so to Don's point, if, if there are any red flags, we can move that back for you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for your work on this, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on. Items removed from consent agenda, we had none. Uh, Council Communications, anything to add after work session? Counselor Brooks.
I just want to say, although I wasn't able to attend, the Arts Committee did meet again, so I just want to thank everybody that's involved with the Arts Committee. And I also just want to, um, say that it's a pleasure working with our council when, um, tonight's discussion, prioritizing the children and, you know, um, you know, they can't vote and they, they, uh, need to be taken care of in this time and I am really grateful to work with people that understand that priority and, um, and make it a priority. So I'm just glad to, um, be working with y'all. Thank you.
Anything else?
Ms. Merritt, I'll just add that as I continue to get the, have the dialogue about the Utility Assistance Program, that I will send out updates to the council. Um, hoping to hear back some more. Here's back from some of my information, uh, tomorrow and then see where that, where that direction takes us. I may have to reach out to you, Merritt, to to help, uh, push some buttons at our state legislator level as well as back at the county, so.
Certainly, I mean. All mass, phone call, Representative Prusak, Senator Wagner, Clackamas County Commissioner Savas, and Chair Bernard if we have to.
Okay, so I will keep you updated when I know more.
Appreciate it. Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All's a favor, just raise your hand. All right. Good evening. Thank you for attending tonight. Everyone be safe and have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Don.